We're going to get started if everyone can be seated, please. We're going to begin this morning with our invocation of Pastor Heinz for our rescue, and then our pledge of allegiance, if everyone would stand.
Good morning, let's pray. Father in heaven, we come to thee this day with praise and admiration, Lord, for all that you are to us. We thank you for your care of our county, and, Lord, all your doing in our midst. And yet, the Lord, this is a day where business needs to be discussed, plans need to be made. And so, Father, we call on thee to invoke thyself into the workings of this day. Bless this meeting, each and every one, Lord, those in the field now that are laboring, that you'd protect them and bless them, our law enforcement, our firefighters, and, Lord, for our great administration, that you would bless them and their families with thy protecting hand. And we'll thank you, Lord, and praise you. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Lord.
Welcome to our Henry County Board of Commissioners, nine AM, Tuesday, March 7th, 2023, regular scheduled board meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I will be amending the agenda to add the following items. There are three legislative bills currently in session that I would like to present to the board today. I'd like to ask the county manager, Brett Haynes, Assistant Director of Building Department, to come forward to present. These bills would be in opposition of Senate Bill 188, which limits the authority of Henry County to regulate housing welfare and the opportunity of home ownership; opposition of Bill 514, limiting the authority of Henry County to enact moratoriums; and opposition of House Bill 517, challenging the home rule of authority of Henry County established by the Georgia Constitution. Brett?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, distinguished Board of Commissioners. As Chair stated, every year, seemingly every year now, we have local, or not local, we have state legislation either via the Senate or the House, where they would like to challenge our home rule that is authorized by the current constitution of the state of Georgia. I won't go into too much detail about these bills. Senate Bill 188, this, as you all know, we are dealing with a housing crisis and a housing affordability crisis. Senate Bill 188 negates any local control over whether or not we can regulate how many rentals are within any particular development. This is for new development, existing developments, anything of that nature. It takes away our control altogether. House Bill 514, again, that covers moratoriums. It limits moratoriums for 180 days. It was altered to only cover single-family dwellings. However, the fact that we have to follow zoning procedure law for the public hearing, it negates the purpose of the moratorium, as you all know. If we have to advertise for the required amount of time, any applicants can submit and inundate our building department, our planning department, solely to establish their vested right. Now, unfortunately, House Bill 514 has already passed the House. However, it will move on to the next step. It was amended again to only cover single-family dwellings, and they did add in stipulations for public safety. But again, that public hearing aspect is what we do not agree with on that. House Bill 517 is what I consider the most detrimental. House Bill 517 would contradict many things that have been within the Henry County Unified Land Development Code for many years. It promotes higher-density developments, even in areas that are designated to stay as rural designation. It would compromise our future land use map, our comprehensive plan, that we are working on an update as we speak. This bill contradicts many of that zoning law and procedures that have been in place for years past. And that is why we've brought to you these resolutions. I'll begin with Senate Bill 188. This is a resolution by the Henry County Board of Commissioners opposing Senate Bill 188 that would limit the authority of Henry County to regulate housing welfare and the opportunity of homeownership. Whereas, the Constitution of the state of Georgia, approved by the voters of the state in November 1982, in effect of July 1st, 1983, provides in Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 1, thereof, that the governing authority of the county may adopt clearly reasonable ordinances, resolutions, and regulations. And whereas, the Henry County Board of Commissioners is concerned with the safety, welfare, and quality of living of all residents and future residents, and whereas, Senate Bill 188 has been introduced during the current legislative session, seeking to limit the Henry County Board of Commissioner authoritative power, and whereas, there is a growing epidemic, not only locally, but nationwide, of new home developments and purchases solely for the purpose of rental, and whereas, the shortage of available housing units for purchase is exacerbated by this growing practice. Whereas, Senate Bill 188 would abate all local control of such practice via ordinance or condition, and whereas, such legislation impedes the Henry County Board of Commissioners from protecting the welfare of Henry County citizens, whereas, such legislation impedes the Henry County Board of Commissioners from endowing the public with expanded housing options during the ongoing housing crisis, and whereas, such legislation is detrimental to all cities and counties within the state of Georgia. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Henry County hereby authorize staff to deliver this resolution to the county's local delegation, to the General Assembly, as well as any other necessary parties, consistent with the objectives set forth herein.
Brett, hold up right there. Is there any questions from the board regarding this Senate Bill 188? Any questions or comments? So I'd like to call for a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. All in favor? Motion carries. Go on to the next one.
All right, we'll go to House Bill 514. A resolution by the Henry County Board of Commissioners opposing House Bill 514 that would limit the authority of Henry County to enact moratoriums as currently permitted by legislation. Whereas, the Constitution of the state of Georgia, approved by the voters of the state in November 1982, in effect of July 1st, 1983, provides in Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 1, thereof, that the governing authority of the county may adopt clearly reasonable ordinances, resolutions, and regulations. And whereas, the Henry County Board of Commissioners is concerned with the safety, welfare, and quality of living of all residents and future residents, and whereas, House Bill 514 has been introduced during the current legislative session, seeking to limit the Henry County Board of Commissioner authoritative power, and whereas, House Bill 514 would hinder the effectiveness of moratorium enactment for single-family dwellings by requiring advertisement and public hearings, and whereas, the current state definition of single-family dwellings includes one-family and two-family dwellings, as well as townhouses. Whereas, House Bill 514 would allow for an influx of applications inundating county departments solely to achieve vested rights. Whereas, such legislation impedes the Henry County Board of Commissioners from ensuring smart, sustainable, and well-planned decisions regarding housing and the cessation of certain types of housing as deemed necessary. And whereas, Henry County opposes any legislation written to hinder its state-authorized authority. And whereas, such legislation is detrimental to all cities and counties within the state of Georgia. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Henry County hereby authorize staff to deliver this resolution to the county's local delegation, to the General Assembly, as well as to any other necessary parties, consistent with the objectives set forth herein.
Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the resolution.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, hearing, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Motion carries. Brett?
All right, this is our last one. Resolution by the Henry County Board of Commissioners opposing House Bill 517 that would limit and challenge the home rule authority of Henry County established by the Georgia Constitution, Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 1. Whereas, the Constitution of the state of Georgia, approved by the voters of the state in November 1982, in effect of July 1st, 1983, provides in Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 1, thereof, that the governing authority of the county may adopt clearly reasonable ordinances, regulations, and resolutions. Whereas, the Henry County Board of Commissioners is concerned with the safety, welfare, and quality of living of all residents and future residents, and whereas, House Bill 517 has been introduced during the current legislative session, seeking to vastly limit the Henry County Board of Commissioner authoritative power, and House Bill 517 would greatly hinder the function of planning and zoning through implementation of rightful citizen involvement on rezoning cases, proposed developments, and future land use. And whereas, House Bill 517 mandates the allowance of materials and density of developments that the Henry County Board of Commissioners has deemed to negatively impact the citizens and future citizens' right to quality of life. Whereas, the current and future comprehensive plan, current and future zoning ordinances, current and future future land use maps, would be significantly altered and demeaned by such legislation. And whereas, such legislation impedes the implementation of such verbiage that can be interpreted to hinder the ability of construction codes involving the safety and welfare of citizens and future citizens alike. And whereas, Henry County opposes any legislation written to hinder its state-authorized ability and power to regulate such zoning matters and/or conditions. And whereas, such legislation is detrimental to all cities and counties within the state of Georgia. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Henry County hereby authorize staff to deliver this resolution to the county's local delegation, to the General Assembly, as well as any other necessary parties, consistent with the objectives set forth herein.
Any questions or comments? Can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the resolution.
Can I get a second? I'll second it. No further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett, for this. Stephanie, as soon as these are signed, I want an email to our delegation, and I want an email to the governor's office, as well as the lieutenant governor's office. Thank you. On a happier note, we're going to have a proclamation read for National Women's History Month by Harold Cooper.
Good morning, Madam Board Chair, Vice Chairman, Distinguished Board Members. I come before you today to pay honor to women on Women's History Month, and today to share this proclamation on behalf of all the dynamic women here in Henry County. The proclamation read is such: Whereas, American women of every race, class, ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. Whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. Whereas, American women have served our country courageously in the military. Whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history have been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, that the Henry County Board of Commissioners declare the month of March as Women's History and Empowerment Month in Henry County, and we encourage all citizens to observe March as Women's History with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities this seventh day of March 2023. Now, I'd like to ask for every woman in this community room to please stand, and I'd like for our 692 women that make up our workforce, wherever they may be in their respective work units, who may be watching this board meeting, to stand, as we pay honor and tribute to all of you dynamic ladies.
Picture with the proclamation, all of the staff and everyone come over to the screen.
You stole my thunder, Chair. I was getting ready to set that up. The first picture I would like would be with you, Madam Commissioner, and Madam County Manager, and then the second picture with every staff member in here with you all. And I'd like you all to accept the proclamation on all of the employees' behalf. Now, all the staff. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you all for honoring us women, because we do a lot. Okay, next we will have Henry County Fire Rescue Awards, recognition, and ask our county manager to come forward.
Good morning, again, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board and our distinguished Henry County community. In keeping with more good news, I am pleased to stand before the board and recognize several members of our Henry County Fire and Rescue Team. The Georgia Department of Public Health, Office of EMS, and Trauma Region 4, consisting of 12 counties, that contains 50 licensed ground and air ambulance agencies, along with 14 medical first responder agencies. These agencies include both fire departments that have transport capabilities and those that do not. The region also includes county-based and privately-owned EMS agencies. Earlier this year, the annual Region 4 EMS Awards were announced, and on February 1st, 2023, the following region EMS awards were given to Henry County Fire Rescue personnel. The Dr. Jo Simon Pediatric Award of Excellence was awarded to B. Schiff Station 2. That included firefighter paramedic Gregory Beavers, firefighter paramedic Adam Bedford, firefighter AEMT Danielle Williams, Lieutenant Stephen Daniels, and firefighter AEMT Robert Latticore. We also had the Region 4 Paramedic of the Year out of Henry County, firefighter paramedic Desmond Walker. We also had the Region 4 EMS Director of the Year, Assistant Chief of EMS Billy Petit, who is here with us this morning, and I'll have him come up at the conclusion. But the biggest award was Henry County Fire and Rescue was named the Region 4 Emergency Medical Service of the Year, and that is an excellent recognition. The team did present the award during their awards, but I thought that the Board of Commissioners need to be made aware of this honor, and wanted to share in my appreciation for Chief Burnett, recently-retired Assistant Chief Stacy Ponder, and his entire team. This is such an honor. At the beginning of my presentation, I listed the number of counties that we compete with, and to be named the Medical Service of the Year speaks to the leadership that we have in our fire and rescue services and the services that our employees are doing on a daily basis. So at this time, Chair Harrell, I'd like for Assistant Chief Billy Petit to come forward, because he was named the EMS Director of the Year, which is also an amazing honor. And then we'll have Chief Burnett come forward as well, as we present or represent the Medical Service of the Year. And I would like to take this time to give them a round of applause.
Again, congratulations to our Henry County Fire and Rescue. You guys are doing amazing things, and we appreciate all of the work that you do in our community to keep our citizens safe. Next, we're going to have a presentation from Jonathan Pan, our Cluster Leader, on the Aquatic Center.
Good day, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, Henry County residents. Today I stand before you to present an update on the Henry County Aquatic Center. Currently, we, well, recently, you know that we completed the MOU with City of McDonough for us to do all the planning permitting through the county. We're currently in permitting. The plans have been submitted. We are on our second round of comments, and hopefully, our plan is to have that wrapped up, the plans finalized by the end of this month. Next, I want to show you a site overlay of the Aquatic Center and water park. Here, we did an overlay of the site of the, how the property is laid out. If you can see right there, there is a 50-foot buffer, and then a 100-foot buffer for, from that property line of where those houses are to where the parking lot is. We are not disturbing any of those trees that are currently there, those mature trees, and anything on the other side of that cart path. If you see the cart path around the circular parking lot, a little bit off of it, there's a cart path right there. Anything beyond that going towards those houses, we're not disturbing. So that 50-foot disturbance buffer is there, and then there's a 100-foot buffer as well. In addition to not disturbing those trees that are there, we're going to be beautifying the area, planting other trees. Of course, they won't be as mature, and then a lot of landscaping. There's also going to be a beautiful fountain in the middle of that circular parking lot, so it's not like you're looking at a Walmart parking lot or anything. So it'll be very appealing to the eye. And then to the left over there is the additional parking, where there is an easement for Georgia Power right there for that additional parking. So now we'll talk about the new timeline. Like I stated, we'll hopefully have all the approvals completed this month. Going into April, we plan to submit the solicitation for bids for the construction of the Aquatic Center. We're going to do a RFP so that we can ensure that we have the best bidders for this project, and that's the best process for us to go through. The bids will be due at the beginning of May. Once the bids come in, we'll have a committee that will review the bids and score the bids. After that, we will do interviews for the top two or three bidders on this project. And then, we plan to submit approval for who we select, that committee selects, the second meeting in June. Once that's done, then the notice to proceed will probably go to them beginning of July, considering all the other documents that they have to submit and get to purchasing and things like that. So, in the bid, they'll have 18 months or 540 days to complete the project, which will put us around the beginning of 2025, once it's complete. That's barring any, you know, weather delays, any material delays or anything like that. So, we're hoping for the best. We actually put extra days in there for that, and the goal is to get it done within the 18 months. So, that's where we are. Any comments or questions?
Commissioner Thomas.
Could you go back to your overlay plan, please? And thank you for pointing out the fact that you have this buffer between the houses that are there, because I know we have some citizens who've been here a couple of times concerned about that particular area. But my question is, within that line, not outside it, but in a hidden format, will there be any type of fencing as well?
We have not identified any fencing, no.
And the reason for that, they were concerned about people from this park being able to wander into their backyards and what have you. So I just wanted you and your group to consider, would you also add within that, somewhere in that tree line, this is for your group, I know you have a whole group in panel to consider the possibilities, of some type of fencing to let the residents know that we're doing everything we can to make sure no one wanders from the park into their backyard. And that was one of their concerns about doing something. I don't know if you have another way of doing that or what have you, but just consider that on their behalf, that it would be another safety feature. And also, if you will, let us know what type of, where would cameras be positioned on the park, so we can also let the residents know that we are looking at safety, as far as cameras being in the right positions, to make sure, again, that we are not, that we'll be aware of any wandering people that may go into the area.
Yes, ma'am. So there will, cameras are already, we're already looking at cameras. There will be cameras inside the facility and on the external of the facility. There will be cameras inside the facility and on the external of the facility, so.
I'm just thinking about that size, since we got so many comments about it and that we're not addressing their concerns, just to look at other ways to say, now, we're addressing with the buffers, but we're addressing digitally with our cameras and we're looking at the possibility of adding some other safeguards there.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Lewis.
Hey, Mr. Penn, I'm in contact with those, the neighbors of their association. They did not want a fence, per se, because they are worried about the aesthetics of their community and be able to look over there. So I will follow up with them just to, just to make sure, you know, what their wishes are. I don't think they did want a fence, though, but whatever they do want or what they're looking for, I'll make sure we communicate it to you.
Thank you, sir.
I want to say, I'm not talking about a fence that we normally see, that you see that's so ugly and that will be this place, but I do want them to feel like the ones that I've had some contact with, that there are other safeguards there for them. And so that was my reason to say to have your committee look at the possibilities of what that safeguard should be. I'm not saying it should be, I'm not saying it shouldn't be, but we definitely need to have that discussion. And I've had the, also, the county manager can attest to this, we've had subdivisions tell us they want certain things like walk, no walking trails, no fence, no this, and come back after everything is done, say, hey, we changed our minds because we made a decision on an emotion of a few neighbors and not on the best thing for the area. So look at what's best for the park, not on the emotions of the people that are there. Because neighbors change, people move, they move, and when they do move, the other people that move in want to know, well, why didn't you all think of this ahead of time? So just have your committee explore it, is what I'm asking you to do.
We will look at other options.
Commissioner Angler.
Just two questions. The parking lot that you pull into, I guess, right there at the front, I guess, is that the service also the Aquatic Center as well?
Yeah, so that's overflow parking.
Wow, okay. And just food for thought, with the neighborhood being there, you've got apartment complexes, will there be sidewalks going around the subdivision or around the lake for folks to have, as Commissioner Thomas mentioned, maybe walking paths around? That would be a nice add feature that folks could use it as a walking park, too.
Currently, we don't have that shown here. Of course, there'll be sidewalks along the walkway to get up to the different parking lots into the facility and things like that, but we don't have additional, like a walking trail, we don't have that currently on the plans.
Okay. Thank you all for all your hard work, I appreciate it. Looks fantastic.
On the walking trails, just the neighbors, they don't want people, they're already complaining about people from the apartments coming through their yards anyway to go fishing on the, on the golf course, so they are not in favor of any traffic coming through their neighborhood to be able to access the Aquatics. Yeah, so I don't think.
There's a bunch of trees, so can't nobody go through the trees?
And there's a lot of trees there, and as I stated, we're going to add some trees. Of course, they just won't be as mature as those trees, because those have been there for a while, but they will grow, and so, you know, that'll add to that.
Thank you. Great presentation, Mr. Penn.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. If we could have our county manager come forward and read the consent agenda.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, March 7th, 9:00 a.m. Under E-911, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners to authorize the upgrade and redundancy addition for the Henry County E-911 Center's GPS and generator critical power infrastructure by Verinex via Omnia Partners contract at a cost of $962,229 to be funded through E-911 fees. We also have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners to authorize the upgrade for the P-25 Public Safety Radio System through Loud Communications at a cost of $789,068 to be funded through E-911 fees. Under Facility Maintenance, we have a resolution awarding a contract to Garland Doing Business, DBS, Inc., Omnia Partners, Public Sector, U.S. Communities via Innovative Roofing Corporation in the amount of $1,294,348 for the replacement of the roof at the administration building due to excessive water intrusion caused by age and deterioration of existing structure, utilizing capital improvement plan funds as approved by the Board of Commissioners. Under Financial Services, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to accept an additional funding from the U.S. Department of Treasury's Emergency Rental Assistance Program, ERAP II reallocation for Henry County's ERAP in the amount of $1,434, 434.59. Under the Police Department, we have a resolution approving the purchase of 22 Panasonic Tough Books for the Henry County Police Department School Resource Officer Unit in the amount of $70,205 from CDW-G Sourcewell Contract. The Henry County Board of Education will reimburse the Henry County Police Department for all costs associated with this purchase. Under Transportation Planning, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for a Livable Centers Initiative Grant for Henry County Transit Planning Project, referenced our fixed route local bus service in 2023 in the amount of $100,000, and commits to provide the required 20% local match. And then under SPOS, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving a supplemental agreement for Moffett and Nickel in the amount of $45,688 on design of State Route 81 widening, and this project is located in both District One and District Three. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Okay, are there any concerns about items on the consent agenda, Commissioner Thomas?
One question, please. On the Facility Maintenance, Section 8, my question is, in replacing the roof system that's there, is any consideration being given to slope this roof, or will it go back as a flat top as it is? Because we've had some problems with the roof constantly, and we had entertained, if I can remember, trying to determine when roof systems were going to be replaced to stop some of the problems that we were having, to see what else we can do. Hey, Hutch.
Good morning. We looked at different options regarding the roof, but the sloped option is not, it's not feasible due to the load and how the building was designed. So what we're proposing is a 30-year warranty, and we have performed the same roof over at the Public Safety Annex, DFAX building, and each year, the manufacturer comes back and does an inspection on the roof, and if there's any issues with the roof, we address them at that time, so.
How does that work, Hutch, if you do a 30-year warranty and that company is no longer around in 30 years?
Well, this company, and that's our concern, because in the past, we have hired companies that went out of business. This particular company's been in business since the 40s, so, you know, we're just hoping they're, they're around.
Well, let me ask another question. Would it be students of us to start doing something similar that we do with developers when they are constructing, doing some type of bonding, like they do for the roads and what have you in subdivisions, to make sure that we do have monies available? If indeed a company is not there, we have that bond to go back on and use and cash in for repairs? Have you considered that?
So we haven't, Commissioner, and I'm not sure what that type of structure would look like in terms of the developer bonding. I do know that for most, for all of our contracts, they do have to have insurance, and so I would assume that in the event that they default or they don't complete the work, then obviously that, the insurance piece is obviously if something goes wrong. But I'm not sure that we've ever structured a deal where we award a contract, they provide the insurance, and then we require them to set aside a certain dollar amount to bond in the event that they walk away from the project, I think, if that's what you're asking.
You know, we're doing that in subdivision when it comes to roads, and that the final permit before they leave that subdivision, we have inspectors go out or what have you to release it, and that was the reason why I asked, because I know, as Hutch said, there've been problems in the past when used providers, we have a 30-year warranty, but that company is no longer around, and I'm trying to think of a way to protect the county. And I know you don't have that answer now, but maybe you can explore it to see what the other options are to make sure we protect an investment of the county in case, again, we find ourselves, well, for 30-year warranty, but the company is nowhere around for us to try and take that back to them.
Absolutely. I'll follow it with the county attorney, and we'll provide a response back, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So this is the question, if the company goes out of business, then the bond is null and void.
So for what Commissioner Thomas is referring to, typically, when developers come in in bond projects, they go through a bank, and so we can call the bond. Now, the problem we have with that is if the bank goes out of business, and then we have a, and we've seen that, we've absolutely seen that.
Okay. And that could make the cost more if we're requiring them to bond, correct?
I would imagine so. I don't know that you would get vendors to bid on projects. Obviously, this is on state contract, and so we are pulling it off of a state contract, so I would imagine we probably would not be able to pull it off the state contract if we're going to add that additional bonding requirement. But again, let me do some research, and then I'll definitely provide a report back to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do you have no other questions or comments, or can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second? Okay. No further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. That ends the consent agenda. Next item is regular agenda, planning and zoning. There's an appeal hearing. Kamau and our county attorney Nancy, if you will come forward.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, and Citizens of Henry County. M. The Colonnade LLC of Brickell, Florida requesting appeal to ordinance 23-2 for property located on the south side of Mount Carmel Road, south of the intersection of North Bridges Road, and landlots 113 and 144 of the 6th District, and 128 and 129 of the 7th District. The property consists of 35.72 plus or minus acres, and the request is for relief from the constraints of the multifamily moratorium, District 4, presented by Kamau O'Salon, interim assistant director. The subject property is highlighted in green on the map, and again, is surrounded by North Bridges, Mount Carmel, and Bridges Road here. This slide displays a site plan that was approved for the subject property on September 20th of 2022. This is a timeline of the events from when the applicant first applied for the rezoning and the comp plan, all the way to the site plan approval. The subject property was granted a comprehensive plan amendment, Comp AM 2108, from high and medium density residential to just high density residential, and was rezoned, RZ 2131, from M1 light manufacturing and C2 general commercial to RM multifamily residential on August 16th, 2022, by the Henry County Board of Commissioners for the purpose of a townhome development. The site plan was then approved on September 20th, 2022. On January 4th, 2023, the Henry County Board of Commissioners enacted ordinance 23-2, a moratorium on all applications for multifamily housing developments for a period of 12 months. The moratorium states, no applications for any development permits pertaining to multifamily housing developments are to be accepted by any departments during this period. Additionally, the moratorium specifies that a property owner may make a claim for vesting and the granting of an exception, and such events, the property owner shall submit a written application, including verifying supporting data, documents, and facts, and request a review by the Henry County Board of Commissioners. A vested rights appeal was submitted on February 20th, 2023, by M. The Colonnade LLC, the aggrieved applicant to the Planning and Zoning Department regarding the issue of ordinance 23-2. With all that being said, staff recommends that the Board of Commissioners complete the appeal proceeding by affirming the validity of the claim to vested rights, which would allow the applicant to proceed with the permitting process for the townhome development.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and remaining members of the board. The applicant in this case, who's represented by the attorney Andrea Pearson, who's here today, did submit a 166-page application that consisted of two affidavits, contracts, and bills that they had acquired since the approval of the site plan in September. They presented some documentation prior to, but they presented some afterwards. I'm not going to belabor this by going through all of the documentation as they did, as I did previously, but I will say that since November 4th of 2022, when they purchased the property, they did enter three separate contracts in which they actually provided a copy of the contracts, those contracts being for, being for traffic studies, architectural and development plans. In addition to that, they did hire moss and bass or what have you, which also accumulated some fees and such after the site plan was approved. And as we discussed before, what we look at to determine whether an individual's property rights are vested or not is, number one, whether or not there was a formal or informal approval, and here we do have a formal approval of the site plan. And then we look at if there was a change in their legal position, or whether there was a change in their economic position after that formal approval. And in looking at the contracts that they provided, which I believe was in the packet near the end, starting on page 115 of the 166-page packet, there's an affidavit there that speaks of the investments that they made in following those of the contracts they made after that fact, and I can go through them at the board, so requires. But basically, they were for professional services that involved the land, and in this case, I think they had submitted enough documentation that would indicate that they are actually vested, so that would support the staff's recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to find that they are vested.
Is there a dollar amount tied to what they submitted to you?
There is a dollar amount. So they have several amounts or what have you, but I'll go with the amounts that I saw. They did purchase the property for the property price, and for reasons I won't go into, I didn't necessarily include that, but the document, and they will probably have a different perspective on that, but after their approval, they did do a traffic study that was about $7,000. They entered a landscape architect work contract for $25,800, which was in Exhibit 3 and 4 of the, 3 and 4 of the packet that they provided. They also spent $59,498.49 for the development of the property. And I, and I think we may have a difference on this, but they also spent several million dollars on the actual purchase of the property on November 4th of 2022, which took place after the site planning, but I would argue that is not a price that we should consider for economic purposes of their change in their positions, because they would have to buy the land regardless, but all of the designs and the investments that they've made since that time period, which would put them in a different economic and liability position, I do believe that those should be included. That being said, based on the information I reviewed, along with the planning and development staff, I do believe that they would have a solid argument that they are vested and that they are in an economically different place, so.
Well, I think the land was purchased based on the fact that we zoned or rezoned, is that correct?
It was zoned, and the site plan had already been approved. There was a land purchase, but I think that if this goes beyond that or what have you, we need to argue that point, is what I'm saying. But as far as the other investments regarding contracting, that kind of stuff, I think that those should definitely be considered, but they did purchase the property after the rezoning and the site plan was approved. That is correct. And that concludes my presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners. My name's Andrea Pearson from Bloom Parham, and we are representing M. The Colonnade with respect to this request for an exception, which they have done a very good job of sort of outlining what our position is and why we believe that we fit within an exception of this because of the vested rights that we've obtained. As they mentioned, there was a rezoning expressly for the purpose of allowing multifamily townhomes. There was then also approval of this specific site plan, and also worth mentioning, the rezoning itself required numerous conditions, including including a construction of North Bridges Road for the benefit of the county, as well as donation of some specific property. And the site plan had to be revised in order to accommodate that building of that road. And that came before the board again in September, which you all approved that specific site plan. And M. The Colonnade purchased the property following those express approvals in reliance on that, knowing that they can develop this property for the purpose of multifamily townhomes, and they would not have made the purchase without those approvals. And following the purchase, they immediately went to work to develop this property, as she mentioned, entering into numerous contracts to get the land disturbance permits, the plans for that in the works, basically almost immediately. And those are the contracts that are included in our documentation and the sums that they expended to pursue that. And they purchased in November, and the moratorium went into effect in January. So they, you know, spent a good bit of money in a short period of time trying to get this project moving forward. So I think that's essentially our basis for our request for this exception. We believe that there were a substantial change in position in purchasing the property and making these expenses in reliance on the approvals of the specific site plan and the rezoning. Just a little legalese, we've also provided our constitutional notice letter. We believe that in the event the exception is not granted, then the colonnade's vested and constitutional rights will be violated. But we are here to request the exception from you all, and if you have any specific questions.
And these are, these are 127?
Correct.
All right. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Yes, excuse me, make a comment. Yes.
Kamau, would you please go back to your date lines? I think it's important to understand the date lines, the timelines that are here on 8/20, August of 2021, when we started this process and had pre-meetings as well with these applicants outside of the Board of Commissioners to make sure that some concessions were put in place as far as the road and the additional land that was placed in here to expand. I think that's Bridges Road, right? To make it a usable road as well is something that did not, was not a requirement, but they did work with us to make it happen, I guess is a better way to make that happen, to state. And the timetable shows that during this time period before we put in the moratorium, that we worked very, very extensively with this applicant. I think the staff has done an excellent job outlining whether or not a vested interest has been established. They have put forth a community here that is gated and that does have a compounded amount of greenery placed in it so that apartments or the townhomes are really designed as a community that will be, promotes health and safety as well. Now, based upon the work that has been stated by the staff, I do want the board to consider that this would be a great addition to this area. It's not something brand new, but going back to 2021. And I hope that this board will see that. A lot of time has been put into it by the staff to make sure it brings forth the quality product line for the district, and will consider following the recommendation of the staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Okay, so I'd like to call for a motion to approve the appeal.
I'd like to make a motion to follow the recommendation of the staff and approve the appeal process and allow this project to continue.
Okay. Got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor. Those that are opposed, motion carries. Stephanie, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes for February 7th, 2023, regular scheduled BOC meeting and February 7th, 2023, call BOC meeting. Can I get a motion to approve minutes?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. There's no discussion, all in favor. Upcoming meetings and events, March 9th through 10th, 2023 is our BOC retreat. March 21st, 2023, at 6:30 PM is our regular scheduled BOC meeting. I'd like to call for a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters.
Motion.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries. We will go into executive session and come back and reconvene after executive session. Thank you.
Okay. That was exciting. Is it exciting?
Long way to turn.
Oh, is this what we're supposed to wear on the trip?
I guess so.
All right, we are going to reconvene from executive session. I'd like to call for a motion to reconvene.
Motion.
You get a second?
Second.
All in favor? So, okay. Approval of the affidavit and resolution pertaining to the executive session. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve employment agreement. Second.
Sorry. We're approving the affidavit and resolution for executive session.
So we're approving the affidavit for the resolution pertaining to executive session. Okay. I am going to amend the agenda. I would like to make a motion to... Do I have to make a motion? I don't have to make a motion due to Senate Bill 22. I would like to reappoint Sherri Matthews as our county manager.
Now she needs to make a motion for the contract.
Thank you for the motion for the contract and for the staff members to carry out the provisions of the contract as agreed upon between the county manager and the board. That should be sufficient.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve the employment contract for the county manager that will go into effect today.
That is correct.
Or when her other contract ends, is it today?
It will go... You can... We have drafted a contract to go into effect on today and for the members of the department of Henry County to carry out the provisions of the contract as agreed between the board and the county manager.
Okay. So I make a motion to what she said. You got a second? Is there any discussion?
Go ahead.
We went through a lengthy process to talk about what needs to happen today. And even though I know that we have a great county manager and I approve of the work that she does, I did have some concerns about the way we have decided to move forward. And it has nothing to do with her personally. It's just the mythology. It's not in place for everyone that I think should be addressed. I do have some concerns about it. And there are concerns that cannot be addressed here. But I do want to make it public that I do have some deep concerns about the way we're moving forth with it. And I can't agree with all provisions of it, but I do agree with most of it. And because I do agree with most of it, I will support it. But it's not without doubts and it's not without concerns. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes.
Yes, I think that we are moving Henry County forward today. I'm very excited that we are retaining Mrs. Matthews. I think she is doing a fantastic job for the county. We are really moving in a great direction. She is providing great leadership for this county. She has assembled a very good leadership staff. And I think they are all in support of Mrs. Matthews. And so today I congratulate Mrs. Matthews on the job that she is doing for the county. As a taxpayer and citizen, I appreciate everything you do for the county. Thank you.
Okay. And I would just like to piggyback on what Commissioner Lewis has said. Our county manager has taken us to a different level that this county has never been at before. We have amazing cluster leaders. She has put great leadership in place to continue to move this county forward. And I just want to thank you for a job well done. And it hasn't been easy dealing with us as commissioners. Because we tell you one thing and then we get up here and sometimes say something different. And so I just want to applaud you for everything that you have done to try to put us on the right track and try to get this county to come into the 21st century. You know? And so I appreciate your leadership. You work hard. Your team works hard. And if we truly want to continue to move in the right direction, we have to continue to put good people in place. And so thank you, Sherri, for all that you do for this county. A lot of times it goes unappreciated. But you do an amazing job. And as I always say, that you're one of the best county managers ever. So thank you. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to accept the county manager's employment agreement contract. Okay, I did that. So we had a motion. We had a second. So we had the discussion. Johnny, did you have anything?
I will comment. This is my third contract that I've been involved in with our county manager. So hopefully I may be around for the fourth. So thank you. Job well done.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.